I call the meeting of the Willets City Council order for August 12th. Could we all rise and join Ron in pledge? Let me please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, could you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Magical?
Yes.
Warren Sting?
Here.
May I have a question?
Here. So, do we need to amend this agenda for these off-agenda items?
Yes.
So, we have two items, it looks to me like, to add to the agenda this evening, to the consent calendar, if it pleases. One is to, I'm sure you guys all have this in front of you, if you don't, for the public, one is to adopt a resolution declaring acceptance of an FAA grant offered to prepare an airport pavement management program for the safety and compliance at the municipal airport. Let me just ask for clarification from staff that this is something that came up after the agenda was prepared and it's timely that we do it before the next meeting?
Yes. We were just notified of it yesterday and they will not release grant funds until we adopt this agenda, or this resolution.
Okay. Then, the next item is authorize city manager to finalize and execute an early resignation warrant waiver and release agreement for Jerry Campbell. Is that also?
Yes, we finalized that notification yesterday.
And it needs to be done prior to the next, another council meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Can we do both of these at once?
Yes, they are being offered up as-
Can we move to add both of these items to the consent?
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion before we put these on the agenda? This is just to put them on the agenda, consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Warren, strong?
Yes.
Excuse me, just let me interrupt that just for a second. Do we have anybody in the public that wants to address this objection, us putting this on the agenda? Thank you.
Magical?
Yes.
Warren Sting, may I have a question?
Yes. So, then we move on to public communications. This is where anybody in the community that would like to address city council on an issue which is not on the posted agenda, no action will be taken. We'd like you to limit your comments to three or four minutes. And if you have such a comment, please step up to the podium, introduce yourself, and even sign in if you don't mind, it's not absolutely mandatory.
Hi. Hello, city council, my name is John Mitchell, I'm a resident of Willets. I'm an engineer working for utility companies and state governments to do energy conservation and climate change adaptation work. And I wanted to bring to your attention that international weather and meteorological agencies have determined that there is now going to be an El Nino this year that's going to be as strong as the strongest El Ninos on record, which was 1982, '83, and 1997, 1998. If you've been here over that time, you'll know that '82, '83 was our record rainfall year with 94 inches of rainfall in that season. And in a five-day period in January of 1997, we had almost 14 inches of rainfall accumulation. So, while the models indicate that we should at least be experiencing what could be, you know, our normal record rainfall period, there's also a compounding event going on in Northwest Pacific, I'm sorry, Northeast Pacific, between here and Oregon. The warmest body of water on record that's ever been observed there, about four to six degrees centigrade above average. It's been called the blob by people on the Weather Channel, one of the reasons that's caused some of our current dry events. But, the models don't know how to treat this extra warm water. So, while, you know, we would normally expect record rainfall this year, it's very possible we could experience significantly higher values this year. So, I'd just like to exhort the council to take that into consideration and do proper preparedness for the possibility of 120 percent rainfall of our maximum this year.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Do we have anybody else want to address? Yes, sir.
My name is John Mayer, and this is in regards to the property behind the Mormon church, the eight acres back there. We've had a lot of difficulty with forerunners, dirt bikes, bicycles. We've put up posters, had George Dudley put up posters, and we've tried everything we can to keep these kids out. I feel real bad for them, by the way, there was a bunch of little kids there today on bicycles. And I told them, I said, "You know, I really apologize to them, I said, "I'm so sorry, but you can't ride here anymore." And, "Well, how come?" And I said, "Well, there's been some erosion. And so, what's going to happen is if you ride, then the dirt bike people are going to show up and they're going to want to ride. And then, we're going to get the four-wheelers in here like they've had forever, and they really tear the hell out of things out there." So, with that said, what I want to do is I'll talk to Buddy Garman and have Buddy come out, take a look. I went out there today and walked it, and one thing you can't see out there, you'll see a line of trees, then the shelf drops off real fast and it goes out flat like that, then it goes way down to the creek. There's a wonderful row of trees down that top bank. We can't let anything happen to those trees in that brush in there because that's what's holding the bank up now. And then, the grass in the field there now is this deep. Normally, we'd want to cut that for fire reasons. But, I would say right now with what this gentleman here just said, if you let that vegetation go, we're going to do everything we can. And the next thing I'll do is I'll get Buddy Garman out there to take a look and see what he thinks we should do to shore this thing up. And then, on the other hand, the other way out is, I'm going to sell the property. I'm going to sell the property. So, my first objective to sell the property is, I want to talk to local contractors. I don't, Bob Hopkins is the last one I ever knew here, but-
He's still here?
Is he still here?
Sure.
He may want to develop that property, you guys will really need to help out, whoever it is, you need to help them out, get something done out there. So, it's not a, I'm sure that the people in Harris Manor are complaining, they did several years ago, I'm sure they're still complaining. And, it's really horrible for them because in the winter months, when these four-wheelers go down there, if these tires is wide, they come out of there, down through Harris Manor, and that's not a paved street anymore, it's a mud street at that point. So, I'll try to contact, I'll drop, I'm going to drop my price down to about half of what it's actually valued at. And I want to sell that to a contractor, I'm going to try local first, and then I'm going to try outside the area after that. There's some, I was looking at some beautiful homes over in the Williams area, around the Sacramento where I'm from, I see where they've done real nice, real nice stuff. So, that's where I'm at.
Good, thanks, John.
And I will work with you and the police department, I'll do everything I can to help you with this problem of these people out there. I told the chief of police that if he finds someone out there and he'll just sign him with a little misdemeanor, I'll sue the family. And then, once the word gets around, "Hey, you go out there and tear this guy's property, he will sue you." He might not win, but he's still going to take you to court. But, if that word gets around, maybe that'll help a little bit, I don't know.
Maybe you can leave your contact information with me, John, I've kind of lost track of it.
Okay.
If I can help you, I will.
Well, I'm going to send a letter to the city-
Okay.
And I'll put that, I'll put my business cards in there and everybody will know how to get ahold of me.
Okay, thank you.
And so, if anything I can do that you can think of to help you out, you just let me know.
Thanks, John. Anything else under public communication? Yes, sir, come on up.
Okay, we're actually, we live in Harris Manor, and then, so-
Can you introduce yourselves, please?
Yeah. And then, so, he's my husband-
I'm Carlos. Hi, Carlos.
So, we're one of the neighbors that live actually behind Harris Manor where we hear the six-wheeler trucks all the time. So, they told us about the meeting and then the owner was going to be here, so, and then we told other parents there, the other neighbors too, but they're working later so they can actually come to the meeting. So, but we're here, you know, so they can, so we can see if there is something that they can do about it because we're being there-
You agree it's a problem?
Yeah, so, they actually used to drive in our street all the time, and then, my street is private street, so I have to wash down the street with my hose, with my water because the city won't go and clean it up for me. And then, so, it's always like, at night, we're here and like, stuck in the mud all the time, and we can't sleep, and it's just been such a problem all the time.
Okay.
And then, the bicycles too, the kids are very unrespectful, we keep telling them, you know, "Don't do it," but they just don't listen to us.
Okay, thank you for coming, yes.
They left too many garbage on it.
Bottles of water.
Bottles, they bring couch, everything on it, so we pick it out one time already.
What street do you live on?
Crestview Drive, that's the last street behind the church.
Church, yeah, I'm familiar with that.
They got bicycle in the creek, they got motors, they got everything, so pretty soon, I think, one day.
They just like, go and drink there because it's alone, you know, they're not going to say anything, so, pretty much, and then we're tired of calling the cops all the time, too, you know.
Well, thank you for coming down.
So, yeah, and our neighbor just actually went and took the garbage to the dumpster and he paid $80 for that, their garbage.
Yeah.
And they, they're tired too, and, but, kids, they, you know, they're teenagers, little ones too, like eight years old, they just don't listen to us, yeah.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else that, anybody else that would like to address a non-agenda item which no action will be taken? Okay, we will move on to, let's see, I keep, I have all these comments of people wanting to change my agenda around. Let's see.
Did you want to speak?
If it's too late, I can wait until the next meeting.
Well, you had your hands so tentative, but if you wanted to speak on the public comment, then-
Really?
It has nothing to do with the agenda.
Barbara, come on up if you want to speak, that's fine.
Hello, my name is Barbara Plaza, I'm the new owner of 143 Franklin Avenue. I am intending to build a house, but in the process, I've had to fight so many problems there. I'm in the process of trying to build my house, and I am appealing to you guys to see if there's any way I can put my self-contained trailer on it. I do have water, electricity, and sewer that's already on the property. I'm just needing to move out of where I'm at right now with my trailer, and I need to see if there's any way I can put my trailer on the property. My plans have already been submitted to the building inspector. But, I just need to see if there's any way, if there's a porta potty, or if there's some way I can get my trailer on the property because I've been homeless for three years with no water or electricity in my trailer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Do we have someone here from Caltrans on the issue of the, thank you, I just wanted, I just need to know that now. So, I do have someone here on the next, the next agenda item, so I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and do that in the order. I think the more the community that's here for this item is probably a good thing anyway. Don't look at me like that.
I'm sitting in the middle.
So, under, okay, John. So, our next agenda item is a discussion on possible increase in high 20-speed limits. Adrian, you want to introduce this to us?
Sure. Actually, I'll have Jerry come up, let's get to that item. Kathy, I don't think I have that.
We got, I got this delivered to work here just a couple days ago.
Oh, sure. I was going to have him on the city.
So, Jerry?
Yep. We asked Darren Hill, Caltrans traffic engineer, to be here tonight. He's the one who met with us back in May and talked to us about the speed limit changes that were on the horizon. We had actually had a reprieve a couple times over the last couple of years, and the law changed, it used to be every five years they would have to be resurveyed. And they added some provisions in there for extensions. We basically used up all our extensions. And then, the time came for them to resurvey it. And basically, under the law, in order for us or CHP to work radar, we need to be able to justify the speed with a speed, traffic speed survey. Otherwise, you could, you could set the limits or wherever you want, we wouldn't be able to enforce them. So, if you lower them and somebody challenges them, we really can't enforce them, so.
So, what's your recommendation on this, Jerry?
Well, basically, to follow the law. And I think Darren is here to basically kind of give you a little better synopsis of the process, and I think he can kind of explain the survey cycle and all of that a little better than I can. And, but at this point, I don't feel that we have a choice. I think we might have had a choice a couple years ago, and we did avail ourselves of all the extensions we could, but at this point, when we met with them back in May, we asked for some augmentation at the intersection there coming into town. It doesn't just encompass the Blosser Lane, Highway 20 intersection, but the area coming into town also. And, we, I think we got some wins there. I think there's some long-term planning that needs to be done there, but that's not something that we're going to take care of here in the here and now, today, but it's something down the road. I would love to see a roundabout there one day, if you-
Hang on a second here. Rod, can you add to the picture here at all?
I don't have anything, any value, I just listened to the same thing. I listened to, and you're pretty much, I agree.
I will add that when we met with Darren Hill, he explained the process to us that this would go before the board of supervisors, and that occurred on July 7th, I believe. Unfortunately, we weren't notified when that was going to be happening unless I missed it, Darren. So, I think you placed it in the DOT's hands, and then they took it to the board.
Yeah.
So, essentially, what the DOT director recommended that was approved by the board of supervisors is that they forego the public comment period, essentially because this is to be compliant with the law so that it is enforceable. And, I think that just foregoing the public comment period caught everyone by surprise.
So, just for the public, can we explain, the present speed limit is, and it is being proposed to change to?
Sure. Darren Hill, Caltrans.
Thanks for coming.
Sure. Right now, the speed adjusts from 40 to 35 to 30, and each segment is roughly two-tenths of a mile long. And it starts to the east of Cropley Lane, or, I'm sorry, the west of Cropley Lane, and it comes in through Blosser and to Harmon Lane. Nineteen, I'll give you a little background history, 1993, that used to be a half-mile segment of 40 miles an hour from where the sign exists now, all the way to Harmon Lane.
Harms Lane, but that's all right.
Really?
Yeah, I think so.
There's a sign posted, but-
Harms Lane is the one over-
All right, doesn't make any difference, I know.
All right, so, in 93, when Caltrans updated it, there was a lot of pressure that there were pedestrian crossings there, and they lowered it to 35, and a 40, and a 30 mile an hour segment. That's generally what it's been since. In 2004, California adopted the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the feds put out along with every other state, and that dictated how we shoot our speed zones, and how much we can adjust downward the speed zones. We have a history of what the speed has been, 93, 98, 2005 when I did it, 2011 in November, and then, just recently, in April 2015. During that time, the speed has changed roughly one mile an hour. Some years it's been up, some years it's been down. But, statistically speaking, no change in the last 22 years, even though the signs were posted lower. The difference is, is starting in 2004, when they changed the law by accepting the MUTCD, we have a maximum five mile an hour downward zoning. 2005, when we, when we redid the speed zone, we had a great deal of speed zones due that year, and it was a fairly new law, and we were still working out how to implement it. So, we left it alone and ignored it. That meant, we were now on the clock that we knew we were going to have to adjust it at some point in the future. In 2011, November, it was due in 2012, I looked at it again, and there was no change to the speeds. We knew we were going to have to change the speed limits, came over and talked to Jerry about it, we discussed it, and we extended it to the maximum 10-year period. That's, that's the limit under the law. And, we are now actually past that 10 years. So, if we do nothing, we don't have a valid speed zone that's enforceable by radar by the police. What we chose to do in this case is create a slightly longer speed zone, but only two segments instead of three. The manuals recommend 10 mile an hour increments, they generally are, people are more compliant with that because people don't want to hit their brakes, they want to take their foot off the gas. And this will allow two four-tenths of a mile long segments that are enforceable by the police or CHP, and will have a lot better compliance with the drivers. Understand that the 85th percentile, that you'll hear a lot from people, was actually, would recommend a 50, 45, 40 speed zone. So, we are proposing a 45, 35, which is the maximum that we can lower it, which is five miles an hour below what we recorded. So, what you're seeing is the best we can do.
And, if we don't endorse this, will it conceivably change anyway, right?
Well, we've already ordered the signs, the speed zone has been, has been signed, and it's been filed with the county courts. If you don't like it, we have really two options. We can, we can let it go through as it is, or we can leave an unenforceable speed zone. And that, if the-
I see.
Or you can raise it too, right?
We can raise it, that's, you're right. The third option is we can actually raise it further than what we did. We are very much aware that that would not be an acceptable alternative.
Is it enforceable, you say it's not enforceable by radar, is it enforceable under the old means of enforce-
Under pacing?
Yeah.
No, you have to pace a certain distance, and you couldn't get a pacing vehicle in and follow before you're switching to the next zone. That's the problem with having such short speed zones, you need a quarter mile, and these speed zones are only, you know, roughly two-tenths of a mile, so-
Short.
The length-
They're darn close to a quarter.
Close is not the legal definition, though. That's, so every, I mean, you could have a police car start out right behind the car, and by the time they started to pace, they're in the next speed zone upward.
It was just a question.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Do we have any questions from up here? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for coming here, and I understand that you guys have a formula, and that's how it goes. My question for you and for Jerry is really one of local preference. I mean, we're, granted, we're a little behind the curve because this is, you know, it's already gone before the board of supervisors. But, locally, our experience is that there's many near misses, the school encourages kids not to walk to school or ride to school because primarily of the danger of that intersection. It's a good thing that there hasn't been fatalities there, but at the same time, that makes it so that in the formula, you know, it doesn't-
You're right.
You know, there has been collisions there.
Let me, let me address collisions. Primarily, collisions are used to lower a speed from the 85th percentile. So, we'll start with the assumption that the 85th percentile would be 50, 45, and 40 miles an hour, okay? That's what people are actually driving. When we get done changing the signs, 50% of the drivers will still be going over the posted speed limit, of what they're doing now. The collision rates are roughly half the statewide average for a similar facility, similar lane widths, posted speeds, volume of traffic, shoulder widths, whatnot. And when I say posted speeds, I mean, under 55, over 55. So, don't think that, you know, if we change it by five, it's going to change anything. In that type of facility, we're running about half the statewide average for collisions. We average two to three collisions a year, every year, and that's been very consistent for at least the last 15 years. So, we don't have a collision, reported collision history that would say we need to lower the speed from 50, 45, and 40. We then said, "Okay, let's take public input." The reality is, is I drive, I live in Fort Bragg, and I drive across that segment two, three, four times a week. So, I'm very familiar with it, and I know that nobody wants the speed raised in front of their house. I'm very well aware of that. What, what we need to understand, though, is after 22 years of having a lower posted speed, we haven't had a change in the speed of traffic. When we change the posted speed up, we're still not going to have a change in the speed of traffic. That's, people assume that the average driver will drive 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, that's kind of a, and it's really not the case. We have changed the posted speed in Fort Bragg on 20, and we've seen no change in the speed, we've seen no change in the collision rates.
Well, my question, I have another question, though.
Sorry, did I not answer the question?
Yeah, that's okay. My question is that, is there any legal basis for local preference? So, despite the fact that people will continue to drive higher, if on any street, really, the city council says, "No, we want to keep it at 30," or whatever, is there anything in the code that says, "Okay, in this instance, you can ignore the formula because the locals say that they want to keep it?"
We are ignoring the formula. I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to say. The 85th percentile says it should be 50. We're ignoring the formula by dropping it five miles an hour without a collision history or other preference.
Okay, so there isn't like, a local waiver that says despite everything, we want it to be X?
If you're in a business district, if you're in a residential district, if you're in an alley, those are coded to be different.
Right.
So, in those cases, yes, you can say, "I know that cars are doing 33 miles an hour on this city street, but it's a residential zone and we're going to leave it 25." You can do that, yes.
So, it's because it's a highway that you can't just say, "We want the highway in this section to be whatever."
Well, because the reality is, is right now, you have 93% of the cars to the, from Harmon to the 101 intersection, are driving above the speed limit. You've made 93% of your drivers break the law.
Well, they're choosing to break the law.
Well, but, but why are they choosing to? Because we have a sign that's posted that doesn't meet with the law. And the assumption has always been, drivers that are reasonably driving down the road, that are maintaining a safe speed, maintaining an ability to stay on the road and not create collisions, are legal and safe. We assume that a driver is going to be a safe driver, and that's where the 85th came.
May I, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the signs, these that you said-
Yes, the three.
Those are the existing?
No, these are the proposed. We're making several sign changes. I gave you the three that would make the most sense to-
So, the 35 mile per hour is right at the intersection?
Yes. Yes.
With Blosser?
Correct.
Is there any way that that can be sooner, so that people are going-
At Blosser-
If they're going the speed limit, that they're going 35?
Okay, at Blosser Lane, the 85th percentile is 44 miles an hour. By the law, I would round that to the nearest five mile an hour increment, which is 45, and then I can downward adjust that to 40. We're posting it at 35, because I then said, okay, if we make this segment from Blosser Lane to 101 as the segment, then I'm going to take the average speed in the whole segment-
That's good.
And that's 35, counting people almost stopped at 101, and that's what we'll post it at.
Well, I'm just wondering, can that be moved, that segment, a little bit farther east, so that people, at least if they're following the speed limit sign, would be slowed down to, hopefully, closer to 35 when they're crossing Blosser Lane?
We can move it west, I mean, east.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we can move it east.
No, that's west, but that won't happen.
Oh, west, you're right, west. I wanted to go west.
Well, we can move it east.
You can move it east for the westbound traffic.
Well, I'm sorry, I used the wrong-
Oh, well, it should be, maybe it isn't in there in the pictures. But we're going to put a radar feedback sign as well on there, so that as you come into those signs, you will see your speed flashing back at you.
It's kind of on there. It's just small.
It's very small.
And it could also have one, like, you know, a quarter mile ahead, this has 35 miles per hour speed limit ahead, like, we have the warning, you to take your foot off the gas already?
Well, we're going to put in an intersection warning sign with a 35. You have two pedestrian signs coming into Blosser Lane. We're going to take out the further of the two and put in an intersection warning sign with a 35. We can post a black on yellow as a warning to the intersection.
Well, my main concern about this is the speed of existing traffic, and therefore, you know, I'm trying to protect that intersection that has, you know, kids crossing. And other, you know, other crossings, too. But it's the speed that traffic is going as they come down Highway 20 and cross Blosser Lane, that I would love to see it, you know, as much encouragement and enforceability to keep those speeds down.
I mean, that's, the goal is that by having this speed zone updated, it can be enforced.
That's, that part's good.
Ron, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm feeling kind of like I'm in Wonderland here. And I understand, you know, you have certain rules on how to do this. So, let me just make sure I understand-
Okay.
That there are posted speed limits wherever, and the drivers, if 85% of the drivers, let me put it another way, whatever 85% of the driver, whatever speed 85% of the drivers drive at, that becomes a de facto speed limit. Is that-
Generally speaking, you have 55 zones, you have 65 zones, 70 mile an hour zones.
No, but according to the report that we got, and your, you know, the speed survey summary, it shows for, there's actually four different segments, not three, that's in the report, that covers about a mile. And you're showing the existing speed limit, the 85th percentile westbound, 85th percentile eastbound, and the proposed speed limit. And the 85th percentile is pretty much like 10% above the posted speed limit. I think somewhere in that you said that. So, it sounds like what's happening is that that is the de facto speed that people drive, despite what the sign says. When 85% of the people are driving at a certain speed, then in order to make it enforceable, you raise the speed limit somewhat?
It depends on where, and it depends on how.
And on the collisions.
And the collisions, and, for instance, in Manchester, four years ago, we lowered the speed by five miles an hour from 40 to 35. The assumption that drivers will drive 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit just doesn't bear out with any kind of studies or actual anecdotal evidence.
Really?
Yes.
Well, how would you know that unless you-
When we raise the posted speed, the 85th percentile doesn't change.
So, you actually observe the traffic as it's moving to see what the actual spend is?
That's what they-
That's what this is.
When they do that, they don't do it in a marked patrol car where everybody kind of-
Yeah, right, that's those wire things.
No, no, no. We have an unmarked white van, and we have a radar gun, just like CHP uses, and you wait for free flow of vehicles, and you trigger and write down the speed of vehicles as they pass in free flow condition.
All right, but you have to, you have to understand where I'm coming from, and I'm sure you do, is that it's almost like the inmates are running the asylum. And that despite what your records show, that the speed, the actual speed does not creep up if the speed limit signs are increased, I've been driving for longer than you've been alive, and, you know, I have to tell you that I think human nature, it does do that, especially when there's no white vans parked around, or police cars, or anything. People do tend, it is common knowledge, you know, common knowledge, that I had heard it was five miles an hour, was the slack that the police give to speeders. So, if you stay within five miles over the speed limit, you're probably safe, even if you drive past a police car. That's what I've been told. And my experience has proven that. But the interesting thing, the other interesting thing is that what we're talking about, I'm a bit of a number wonk. I like to crunch numbers and see what they mean. And what I did is, I took these four sections and calculated how long it takes to travel that distance at the posted speed, and how long it would take to travel at the increased speed limit. And in that one mile segment of the four segments, a driver would save a little over six seconds. So, you know, I look at Caltrans as being this agency that's promoting safety on the highway. You know, they build safe highways, they, you know, the signs, all this other stuff. And I'm still naive enough to believe that laws are made because they're logical, and there's a reason for them. But I'm not sure what purpose is being served by changing the speed limit on this one segment as it comes into town. It just doesn't, I don't understand it.
Well, Ron, maybe I could toss in here. It's set in statute, and in order for us to enforce, we need to basically have a valid speed survey. Without a valid speed survey, we can't enforce. So, let's say, today you said, we leave him alone, and he said, I'm going to leave him alone. My direction to my people will be, do not make any enforcement stops for speed-related issues there. Because, talk about fruits of the poisonous tree there. I stop you for speeding in basically what would be considered a speed trap by law, that's, it's in this code, and then we find the dead body in the car. None of that would be admissible. And I just use that as kind of a far-fetched sort of thing, but that's, so why put us in a situation where you're going to be civilly liable for something, for basically making, be the same as me telling everybody, arrest people for some crime that doesn't exist?
So, this, so the traffic survey sort of sets what the actual is, and if you do not respond to that by, you know, dealing with the posted speed limits according to what the survey showed, then that wouldn't be, then the signs would not be valid, because it's not supported by the survey.
That's what they've been saying. Do we have any other questions up here before I open it to the public? Anybody in the public like to address this issue? Second, third, and last call?
Keith Rutledge, I just had a quick question. Is it possible to put the rumble strips as you're coming into town? Is that something else? Because I noticed that really helps wake people up to slow down when you see something like that. Just a question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Woodhouse. I take part of the blame for this fun evening you have. This slipped through on the agenda. I think if we had stopped and had the meetings, they would go through exactly what they're doing now. I think, based on the history, it's an unstoppable thing at this point. But I did talk to your city manager, told her that I've talked to Charlie Fielder. He's been very responsive, and I think the city's finding that Caltrans is very responsive on things when you work with them. And told him it was our concern, and we have a number of concerns here that he's willing to work with us on. My suggestion would be to let it go through. We can all study it, look at it, and then make our complaint. And they've done their due diligence, and we can start the clock over, would be my guess, from what I've talked to Caltrans. I did want to make sure to tell you, because I'm going to be working with Darren a lot, that he's a great guy. So, he's going to help us on a number of things. The West Commercial crosswalk's very dangerous, and they're going to do this same routine we're going through now up by the high school, and that's real dangerous for the kids up there. So, we're going to have a lot of opportunities around town to work together on this, and I'm committed to doing that with you. And I think if we use our voices together, we can get stuff done. They do want to help, and they do want safety. Right now, they're in trouble and have been told there's no money even for safety projects till they get other things done. So, we're kind of in a dead zone. But Charlie Fielder does care about us and will work with us, and I think we can do it. Thank you very much.
Anything else up here? Excuse me, do we have anybody else in the public that wants to address this?
Can I just add one more thing?
Absolutely. You're the star witness here on the part of the city, so.
Mr. Woodhouse brought up something important. It was, if you've noticed, those delineator strips down there at Walnut and Main, it was based on a conversation Rod and I and Adrian had with Darren. He's been very receptive on safety issues. When we chatted about this speed survey, and the, I guess the actuality that speeds were going to be raised there, we asked for some roadway improvements, and he was very open to getting us what he could get us. And in fact, I think we're looking at Commercial and Main, where we're going to get some signage there for the turning issues that we're having there. So, he's been a very good advocate, and has, I guess I want to point out, he lives in Fort Bragg, but does drive this road here. We run into each other a lot at Traffic Safety Coalition meetings, so he isn't just some guy that's driving in here and doesn't care about us. He does care about the community.
Thank you, Jerry.
And that was my brief question for Mr. Hill. In talk, a number of people have been bringing up the Commercial Street light, and since you're here-
Okay.
Can we stay on Blosser Lane here? Thank you.
But I have been informed that this is my one chance to ask Mr. Hill this.
I don't think it will be your only chance to ask Mr. Hill this. I think we can do it another time. Do we have any other comments from the public on this issue? And I'll bring it up here. And we need to take direction on this. When we're done with this, I'll ask Mr. Hill to stay for a couple minutes and address your short, but very short question on Commercial Street. Does anybody care to make a motion about it?
What, is it an action?
It's informational.
Say it's a no action.
It's past our review.
Well, good, because I always like doing things that we don't get any decision, and it's such a good use of our time.
You got a decision. Your city manager and your police chief were very influential in bringing it down to the additional five miles per hour, so.
Well, yeah, I just go on the record. I understand the process. I understand the need to do that. I don't think you can expect local government to ever endorse raising speed limits in their community. So, I, it, good thing it's outside our control. I'd never vote for it. But, you know, so, anyway, so now we're done with that. We will, it's just informational, so you have a question on-
Thank you.
But I don't want this thing to turn into, we're just, we've got people that want to address other issues.
And thank you for having this on the agenda tonight. I think we got a lot of feedback in the community, like, what? And so, it helps us be able to explain it. My question is, before the freeway is relinquished, can we alter the timing of the light on Commercial so that you're not told to walk at the same time that westbound traffic is going? Is that possible?
We can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move along then to the consent calendar. We pulled the minutes of June 10th and July 22nd, and we have added items 4E and 4E.
I'll briefly approve the consent calendar with those exceptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Strachan?
Yes.
Strachan?
Yes.
Madam Wong?
Yes.
Warren Stieff?
Yes. Okay. So, we will, we've got the information portal ready. We're going to jump now to, where's the volunteers on this?
It's not listed on the agenda. It was, we were just going to do, take it up at the beginning.
This is why she's looking at you like that.
All right. Well, it's, oh, there it is, past the agenda. Well, let's do it now.
We've lost part of our audience for that one.
We've got the TV public, we've got the press, we've got everything.
All right. Well, we, a few weeks back, we had some vandalism on Main Street in the downtown area and on East Commercial Street, where somebody came in and smashed up a bunch of planters and made a big mess, and it was very disheartening to our downtown merchants in particular. Very quickly after that negative incident, we had a group of citizens that quickly organized an effort to do some cleanup and sprucing up and planting flowers and plants, and really stepping up and helping out our downtown friends and neighbors. And so, some of them are here tonight, some of them were not available to come tonight. But I want to just tell you who they are. Kathy Goss, who's here in the audience. Melissa, and help me with the last name.
Nataliezia.
Nataliezia, and her daughter Macy, who were here earlier, but Macy's three years old, so she got a little impatient. Mike Horger and his children, Colton and Gracie. Phil and Kathy Schuster, they're on the coast right now, so they couldn't be here. Laura Sleeper, Pat Johnson, well, it's Unified Superintendent. Our supervisor, Woodhouse, and there were several other volunteers that were a little bit shy about being here tonight. But this was just such a positive effort, and it was just, it was unsolicited, and we wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you so much for just setting a positive example in the community and stepping up to help each other. I know it meant a lot to our downtown merchants, and it meant a lot to the city as well, to see that kind of cooperation and support for each other. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and shame on me. I went right over it, didn't see it, thought it was further down the agenda. I thought she was trying to move something up on the agenda. Not that I had bypassed something on the agenda, so, or this recognition. Yeah. So, well deserved and well done, Adrian. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Schuster out there with a blower.
Actually, you know, it was, the response was amazing. It happened, I think, early Wednesday morning. I saw it on the way to work. That afternoon and evening, I mentioned it on Facebook, how disheartening it was, and that we should do something positive, and immediately the reaction. And that Saturday, we did it, and there were probably 45 people there. Some people I never had met before that came around the corner with brews and dust pans. People honked their horn. The merchants came out and saw a man was just beside herself. She couldn't believe that people, that strangers would clean up her mess. And it was one of the most positive things I've been involved with in a long time. Didn't want to be here for this. It was really the kids that were the coolest part of it, the teenagers that were there. Macy, who was the little one that was there, to kind of give the community a lead care feel for the day. It was great.
Thank you for your comments. So, we will now have the, next item is a right to appeal. Persons are, am I right about that? Help me if I'm getting off base here again, folks. Don't hesitate.
There's something about a little A coming forward.
Yeah, we got that covered. Persons are- Persons are just satisfied, decision, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. Cities adopt 1094.6, Code of Civil Procedure. It generally limits to 90 days' time within decisions that city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And so, we will jump to item 11 and then we will try and remember to come back to item 7, since I'm not sure why we even make an agenda. Then, this item is a discussion impossible at action to adopt resolutions consenting the inclusion of the city, Willett's properties to the California Home Finance Authority PACE programs and associate members in the California Home Finance Authority. Now, first off, I thought we did this a year, two years ago. Why are we doing it again?
We did this on March 12th of 2014 and it was basically opting into the county's clean energy program and allowing the inclusion of the land within that jurisdiction for, into Mendocino County's Community Facilities District, number 2013-1. As I understand, and I think Mr. Rutledge, who is here tonight, can expand on it further, they had some delays at the county level with this program and they had to go back to the drawing board on a couple of things. And so, that's what this is about tonight. It's more, it's a, it's broader, it's a broader program than what was presented to us before.
Keith, would you please?
Absolutely. Thanks. Keith Rutledge, thanks very much. Yeah, actually, the, this is the same program, it's really not any broader, so just to make sure that that's understood. I mean, the long story of this is that while the county was trying to get an individual district for the county, which was, this was being done county by county on these PACE programs, during that time, there's now several statewide programs. And that was sort of, we talked about, when we were talking about this early on, that it really needed to be a statewide program rather than having each city or each county form their own district. So, in the process of Mendocino County approving a district for Mendocino County, all four cities opted into that proposal. And before that proposal actually got implemented, which would have meant forming a new district and going through a legal validation process and so on and so forth, the program went statewide. And so, basically, all of the counties and all the cities now can join the Golden State Finance Authority, which is part of the Regional Council of Rural Counties, which is the statewide lobbying organization for the rural counties. They form this statewide entity so that any city or any county in the state can opt in. So, it's the same program, it's the same financing. I can tell you now, there's hundreds of millions of dollars worth of this kind of financing that's happened. The jurisdiction that was formed for the statewide went through the validation, it's been validated by the state judge. That validation allowed any entity in the state to join a lawsuit, basically. Nobody did. All that's gone. The program will now start at the end of this month. So, after all these years of, I started in 2007 and so far, the Willett City Council has been supportive all the way along and I think this is finally our chance now to implement the program. I will say the county's already adopted, Fort Bragg's already adopted, it's on Ucaya's agenda next month and they're in favor. Point Arena, I'm still working with them. Humboldt County's adopted, Eureka, Arcata. I was on my way to Trinidad tonight, they're voting in. So, it's basically happening statewide. And so, really, there's no change in the program. I'd be glad to talk with you more about, if you have any questions on what PACE is and all that, but that hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is there won't be now an individual Mendocino County district that has to be maintained all along. It'll be a statewide district that everybody joins into. So, that's what the two resolutions you have in front of you. I will point out that there's, as you might remember, AB 811, which was the original state legislation for PACE programs that was under the Highways Code. That's what most of the programs started out with. The state came along later in response to some of the questions about the Fannie and Freddie and the questions about the jurisdictions and formed this under the SB 555, the Senate Bill 55, for Mellow Roos, which is a different community facilities and that's a little bit more appropriate. I think I agree with that, too. So, by voting tonight, you're going to approve that either of those AB 811 or SB 555 PACE programs could be part of the Golden State Finance Authority's programs, because who knows what might happen in the future. And then, by joining, there's a JPA that you join, the Golden State Finance or California Home Finance, which has changed their name to Golden State Finance. Yeah, I know, it just gets all RCRCCHF, EIEIO. But anyway, the, basically, it's joining that statewide district is what the JPA is about. Same basic program, there's no cost, no obligation, nothing the city has to do other than just allow the property owners in the city to be able to voluntarily take advantage of this program. And the only other thing I want to mention is that, the one difference is that now nonprofits will also, are also eligible, that's under the SB 555. So, AB 811 was just residential and commercial, so groups like Ready, the nonprofit that I volunteer with, we own a house here in town, we're now eligible for that, the Kids Club, churches, you know, any of the nonprofit organizations, still doesn't apply to any governmental organizations, but any private nonprofit or any of the other city residents or any businesses can qualify for this. And it's energy and water financing, which obviously we need access to all of that, so.
So, Keith, what is, so you mentioned Freddie and Fannie, how are they dealing with it now?
There's been no, nothing's happened in, anywhere in the country. There's, you know, hundreds of these programs now, there's been, like I say, hundreds of millions, I think it's like 300, 400, $300 million worth of financing that's gone through in states all across the country. What typically happens when you refinance is that the borrower may or may not choose to pay off the, this assessment if they want to. They don't have to, it just stays with the property. Some people want to pay it off when they buy a property, some people want to refinance it and pay it off. It does have an interest rate associated with it, it's in the sort of 6% or 7% range. So, if you can get better financing than that, then obviously you can do that. But it's, Fannie and Freddie have, there was a lawsuit, it never went anywhere, that's been many months ago. They didn't rise to the judicial proceedings and this validation. And so, basically, it's sort of a done deal.
But what is, what is their practice?
What is what?
What is their practice?
Their practice has been that there's been hundreds and hundreds in state of California, I don't know of any Fannie Freddie where they, anybody came and said they have to pay the mortgage off. That, nothing has happened, as far as I'm aware, in the state of California where Fannie or Freddie have refused to lend on a property or have demanded that the PACE financing be paid off in order to qualify for the financing. So, it's just.
But there's no policy on it?
No, they never promulgated. And that's sort of what happened was, they wrote the letter, which everybody sort of trotted out a few years ago. Sonoma County and Fannie went to, or FHFA went to court and the judge said, "Look, there's no jurisdiction here, you're a federal agency. If you want to promulgate regulations about this, you can, but you can't just send out a letter and say, 'We're going to do something' and then, you know, not do it." And they never did anything about that, because really, it doesn't, it's not really impacting them any more than any other assessment and that's, so nothing's happened on that. And there hasn't been any pushback. I'm not hearing any more from bankers in places I'm going to. And, I mean, we've got 21 Northern California counties above Sacramento and San Francisco, they're all adopting. You know, I mean, even Tahoma, Tahoma City, Glen County, Kalusa. I mean, you know, it's a great program, it's voluntary, there's no reason not to have that accessible for homeowners and commercial property owners to be able to finance energy and water. It's just another financing program and they can always go to the credit union or any other place, home equity loans, all that kind of stuff's still available, obviously. So, you know, it's just another choice.
Any other questions up here or is that a motion?
No, well, I asked a question, I'll make a motion too if you want. But wanted to ask, it still has, at the statewide management of this program will still have the qualifications that only a certain percent of the value of your property can be invested in these improvements and you have to show that the energy and water savings will basically pay back equal to or better than the amount of payments that you have to make through your property assessment.
Yeah, the PACE program is still, all the same, it's just the only difference is forming a statewide district rather than forming individual districts throughout the state.
Okay, so it does assure, I mean, obviously, it's the homeowner or business owner's choice whether to enter into this or not, but if they do, they still have to meet those qualifications so that they're not overextending and putting their mortgage at any risk or whatever they have to.
Well, and I would say that there's definitely disclosures involved with this, that was one of the concerns, and the disclosures say that the lenders are notified in all cases. On the commercial side of things, the commercial lenders in particular, because commercial is much more complicated. So, there's not only lender disclosures, but there's also the borrower disclosures, there's a right to rescind. I mean, there's all those kinds of things you would see in consumer financing. And then, the measures are limited to energy and water improvements, so, you know, you're not going to see trips to Hawaii and granite countertops or things like that. It's basically, you know, for energy and water improvements.
Yeah, so if the city does not vote to opt into this program, that means that everybody living within the county's jurisdiction cannot opt into the program themselves.
That's right.
Okay. So, if the city does decide to opt in, does this, is there any kind of exposure to the city if, let's say, if a property owner who takes advantage of the program, the deal turns sour for whatever reason, can they come back to the city and say, "Well, you enabled me to do this, it's your fault"?
Probably Jim can.
No, I would.
Yeah, all the legal reviews that I participated in, there's indemnification in that JPA and so really, the city's not endorsing anything by doing this, they're just saying, "We are allowing this, we're allowing our property owners within our jurisdiction to voluntarily participate in this program if they want to."
So, do you, have you, has the counties weighed in on how this affects their TEATER program?
Well, the county really didn't have any more comments. I mean, that wasn't one of their concerns as it was. I think the TEATER that we're seeing with the Brook Trails properties, for example, those are unimproved properties, so I think.
But if they put those improvements on it, then in a foreclosed, in a foreclosed property that fails to gain a buyer an auction, then county normally forecloses on that property after five years of back taxes.
Right.
And if those taxes include, but they continue to pay those taxes, that's what TEATER is.
Assessments, right.
Those assessments to the districts that collect their revenues through that process, so.
Right.
You just don't know what the answer to that is.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's part of the equity requirements in this, so that you don't, now, obviously, the housing market could go crazy like it has in the past and change values and people could be underwater if they do maximize. We're typically not seeing in any of these programs anybody taking the maximum of that 15% of their equity, but.
So, they might not qualify. If they're Brook Trails, they might not qualify.
Well, again, it's, the properties that are having a problem with TEATER are the unimproved lots and you won't, this, you have to have an improvement. You can't just go out and put a improvement on it.
Well, it's not, it's not the only properties in the country that are having a problem like that. I mean, you buy houses by the block in Detroit.
Yeah, but again, all you have to do is bring it current. So, if you put a $15,000 assessment on your property and your annual assessment is $1,000 and you went for five years, you would have to bring it current with that amount of money. You don't have to pay it off. So, it's not an acceleratable, and that would go along with all the property taxes in the house. So, you know, it is possible. The county, when we talked about this a year ago, when they were doing, going to do their own district, it really didn't change whether they had the Mendocino County district or a statewide district, it would still be the same impact. Very, very small percentage of number one foreclosures in that case at all. And then, the ones that they couldn't solve, that they would have to take a hit on, is, you know, not even a percent. So, they weren't, it didn't rise to any concern on the county's level.
Yep.
I have a couple of things, like, of course, I share the frustration that we have to do this again, because I mentioned it to a member of the audience and she was like, "Really? You already approved this?" But it is a new.
It could have been on the consent calendar, that's the way most of the cities and counties are doing.
We chose not to put it on consent calendar because it's different enough.
Yeah, it's fine.
But I did, like Ron, go through and just, you know, try to make sure that there was no exposure for the city, you know, that really, we are just giving people options.
Yep.
We can, as a city, choose to remove ourselves.
That's right.
After we opt in, if we choose to.
For any reason, anytime?
At some later date, if we decide that.
Absolutely.
We don't like it.
Yep.
In the interim, since our previous decision, I do know a number of businesses in town that are interested, so I think the commercial aspect is good, because they, they're interested in improving their businesses.
Yep.
Chris and Greta from the Book Chamber could not be here, they're out of town tonight. But also, in the interim, we have Grid Alternatives, which is a solar installation company on East San Francisco, and they had said that they are very interested and hopeful that this will encourage, you know, increase their business that they're doing within the city should this pass. So, I really come back to the same thoughts that I had before, which is that this is an option for our citizens that they could choose to take or not take. You know, I don't want to be the one to say that you can't do it if you live in the city.
Is that a motion?
But yet, your neighbor can. I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution consenting to the inclusion of the properties and adopt a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's incorporated area to finance renewable energy generation, energy, water efficiency improvements, and electric vehicle charging infrastructure and approving the associate membership in CHF.
Is that for both resolutions?
Yep.
Second?
Any further discussion? I still don't support this, didn't support it for, still don't support it, but goes on deaf ears, so I'm not going to belabor it. Be glad to fill anybody in if they care why I think that way, but let's have a roll call vote.
Oh, is there public?
No, that's a good point. Excuse me. Anybody in the public? Seeing none, we'll go back to.
Councilmember Strachan?
Yes.
Strachan?
Yes.
Madalena?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yeah.
Number?
No. Okay, let us, thanks Keith. Good to see you. Let's try city managers' reports.
Well, labor negotiations are still ongoing, but we have not had any meeting since our last council meeting. So, therefore, there will, there's nothing to discuss in closed session tonight for labor negotiations.
Okay.
We are going to hear an appeal on September 9th regarding the Planning Commission's decision on the John's Place matter.
On November 9th?
September 9th.
September 9th. September 9th.
That's our next. It's a regular meeting.
How old are you?
I won't be here either.
How did September 9th become the second meeting?
It's the second. September 2nd is the first Wednesday and September 9th is the second.
Whoops. Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Would it be possible to have a special meeting?
I'll figure that out tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I miscalculated.
Well, it sounds like two absences.
That's still three people.
Okay, then, in case you haven't heard, the old AM &amp; D building has been sold to a 3D printing company. So, they are going, they're looking to start operations sometime this fall and they're working with our planning and building departments on that process.
Do we know what they're going to make? Would you repeat that again, please?
AM &amp; D building has been sold to a 3D printing outfit.
Okay, thank you.
They're down in the Bay Area, they're going to be relocating their operations up here so that they can expand their operations. And we had a good meeting a week or two ago with the new owner, the Realtor and fire chief, planning department, building department, and myself, and.
The one of these still?
Yes, yes.
And Caltrans is still going to occupy part of the building?
They are. They, the new owner said that they get to stay there as long as they need to because they don't need the office space at this point in time.
Good cash flow.
The Arts Center Steering Committee is pursuing a co-op structure and so, Susan and I will be meeting with them tomorrow afternoon to hear what their latest ideas and concerns, or questions are, rather. They've been talking with people that have experience in this and want to bring this back to city staff to see what needs to happen. I signed an agreement with CAL FIRE, I think, a couple of weeks back after our last council meeting for, it was when, well, you might be familiar with this, Bruce, there was a fire or two off Sherwood Road. CAL FIRE Battalion Chief contacted me and wanted to get a written agreement for emergency use of our airport facility in place so that they could use it immediately, so there was some urgency to doing that. And they had, I think, two helicopters up there, there were contract helicopters for that particular emergency for a couple of days. So, that'll generate a little bit of revenue for the city on those occasions. I think, you know, we hope that, we hope not to have those occasions.
Does that have to be a, can there be a standing contract?
That's what it is.
That's what it is for a future?
Right. We may need to do another contract for our ball fields. Right. We may need to do another contract for our ball fields. I know that Frontier Days Association did a contract with them for the use of their fields in such an event.
Okay, so it's already done?
Right. But this one was specific for the airport. I think John Sherman will report on some matters. But I did want to report that the financing for the medical office building did close. I think there were a few challenges towards the end, but it did successfully close. And the city has received reimbursement for our participation in that.
Is he going to talk about?
Yes. Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you. So let's move along to department recommendations. City Clerk?
Clerk.
Finance?
Clerk.
Good. Way to go. Legal?
One thing I wanted to mention was that last month, the Department of Water Resources adopted a model ordinance for landscape efficiency, water use. This is part of the governor's drought orders that took effect in April. And under the law, every land use agency, city, county, other land use agency in the state, has to either adopt a state model or develop their own water efficiency landscape ordinance and report to the state by December 15 what they decided to do. So I was just mentioning this to Adrian this afternoon, that maybe this is something to talk with our new planner about. And we'll, we'll either need to take a close look at the state's model or decide what to do ourselves. Just a heads up.
I think the Hale Creek subdivision is developing its own.
Okay. All right. Moving along, we will, Public Safety, any more, Chief? Okay. Community Development, Public Works and Engineering. Look to me like you. Community Development, did you have comments under Community Development?
Just a couple of milestones that we've hit here recently. The hospital today passed its final OSHPOD stock and staff inspection. So they can actually start, start putting the materials and the staff into it. They can't operate as a hospital until OSHPOD has approved their stock and staff load. That's probably, I'm guessing, a month off or so. But we're, we're almost there. And things are looking good over there. The medical office building, the roofing was installed today. So we're moving along really well on that. A little over a week ago, I issued a building permit to Mendel Mill for a new store on the same location there. And I've been in contact with O'Reilly Auto Parts, and it looks like next week they're going to pick up their permit for the new store across from the Napa. So things are going pretty well. And I have to kind of, a little mea culpa here. I, I have been working with the property owner down there along Hale Creek to get some erosion control measures into place before winter hits. And that's sort of stirred up a lot of other things involved. But we had a really good meeting today between the fire chief, Chief Gonzalez, and myself. And basically, we got agreement from Mr. Mayor to move forward on the things that we're looking for. Ways to block the public from that piece of property and at the same time allow access for PD and, and fire department there. And as part of that, he's also agreed to do the erosion control. He's going to, like you mentioned, bring Garment in to do some grading and stuff, and then we'll do the erosion control and try and get it set up for next winter. I have a feeling that Mr. Mitchell was right. It's starting to look like we may have a real significant winter in front of us. And I think it's time to start preparing. So.
Yeah?
John, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Mayfield at the, who was honored at the Redwood Empire Fair dinner. And I just, he mentioned that the city staff has been wonderful to work with, including city manager, Public Works. And he just had compliments for your office.
Thanks.
Want to pass this on?
Thanks.
I'm excited to see that Mendel Mill building happen also.
Me too. Okay. Public Works, Engineering, Rod?
Good evening. Let's talk about the three major projects, emergency water, Humboldt Street and Ardella Avenue project. Emergency water, we did not meet our completion date of July 31st. We're working on some, some punch list items. And after discussion with Division of Drinking Water, and with respect to our, our grant funding, et cetera, we asked for a 30-day extension. But we do, we, we're kind of in a little bit of a, when are we done? Kind of, because we're not going to have a permanent facility. Right now, today we were pumping 520 gallons per minute through the groundwater treatment plant.
Wow.
That's startup, that's a startup. Our well was, the permit from the county's for 400 gallons per minute, if I read. I don't have the final report on the 24-hour pump test, but we've gone through the backwash cycle and we're, we're pushing out some very clean water right now. And it would take about two to four hours for us to connect to the system and, and have, and a little bit of chlorine. And we would have water in case of an emergency. So that's, that's the positive. The negatives are that we, we're still waiting for our SCADA consultant to finish their work. And we're having a little bit of difficulty with, with PG&E. So the PG&E thing, I think, is going to be, is going to take some, take some time. But after talking with Joy Wildflower at the Division of Drinking Water, the, the actual power connection isn't, isn't, the completion of our project isn't contingent on PG&E power because we can run it off the generator like we've been doing up to this point. So next week, we should have all our SCADA stuff done. And we, I'd like to say PG&E is the, the one thing that's kind of unknown. We had a pre-construction meeting with PG&E yesterday. And what we expect it to be, this is pre-construction, we're just going to put a trench in here and run our conduit and power it up. PG&E balked at the, the original plan. And we have to look at some alternatives. So that's where we're at.
So we'll talk about Humboldt and Della.
Humboldt will be done paving tomorrow. There'll be some punch list items like filling the planners in. Jeremy has done a great job managing that project and getting it through to completion. The, let's see here, you know, he and Andrea did all the construction staking. Last lift of paving will be done. That's what's happening tomorrow. Budget-wise, I don't have the exact numbers right now, but overall, there's been no big surprises. We've had them do a little extra work and we've traded some work. I don't, I don't anticipate us seeing an increase, much of an increase over our contracted price. Della Avenue, we finished last Wednesday. I don't have the final, final numbers, but we, to date, the cost for the project's $171,500. We should have some, some more costs, some more bill invoices coming in from, from WIF and, and other vendors. I don't expect it to go over $180,000. That was a, that was a $400,000 project budgeted. I bet it would have, I would imagine it would have been more than that, given the, the issues we encountered with the old, the old line. We did discover that we will have to replace the lines on Cherry and Viola as well, because we had a circumstance where we hooked up our new line to, to the old line on Cherry Street. And it created eight or 10 more leaks in about an eight-foot section of pipe, because it's the same old, we thought it was PVC. Turns out it's steel. You know, you never really know until you get in there. And at some point in the near future, we're going to have to go and replace those lines. But overall, I was, you know, we ordered 1,500 feet of six-inch C900 PVC, and we have one 20-foot, full 20-foot stick left. So it was a.
Well, that's a, you know, I, I really have to commend you and, and our guys for putting that in. That's a, that's a huge contribution to the city and a huge savings. And emergency projects, something we had to do in a very short period of time. And you guys, once again, got it done. Larry?
I want to commend the, the group that worked on Della, too. They did a wonderful job in working all together. And I know that it was a little difficult at times, but I, I've talked to the different guys that worked on it, and it's all working out very well. The only other thing I have to say is where they made the, by the theater, where they made asphalt and then down Van Lane, about two inches from where they made the, the asphalt, there's a hole in our, in our parking lot. Could, if there's any leftover, could they put it in that hole and pound it down for us?
I'll, I'll talk to Jeremy about that. I think there was some, going to be some leftover.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that, I think I know which hole you're talking about.
Yes. It's a dandy.
If you go out there and look at it, that's where all the water drains to. And there's really nowhere for it to go. Going back to Della, I would, I would, I would say one, one thing is, next time, we'll do it cheaper because we did, we did, there was definitely a learning curve there. We had some, some setbacks that, that were inevitable. But we, we also had some additional costs that in the future will, will, well, we didn't necessarily anticipate. We got into a situation where we had to, we had to complete the project in X amount as, as quickly as possible. And, you know, our vector wouldn't quite keep up with the pace. And in some cases, we couldn't get slurry. And in other cases, we'll, we'll be able to handle it differently when it's our street and not a county road. But I would also add that the people that weren't working on the project, that had to work at the sewer plant, and had to work at the water plant, with, with, obviously, short, were obviously short-staffed and had to take on more responsibilities. So I don't think that contribution can be overlooked either. So.
Have they paved, has the county paved Della?
It's paved. It's.
Sounded like it was done on.
The next day.
When we, as soon as we were done?
We finished on Wednesday. They paved on Thursday. So that was how the schedule worked out, just right.
I had a question. Thank you very much. Wonderful work. East Valley, there was a little section there in front of the primaries, in the primaries that was hardened off. I'm just wondering what's going on there.
A water leak on the service. We fixed that yesterday. Yeah. Yeah. So it bubbled up the pavement in between, it got in between the, the lifts of asphalt and created a pretty good hump there.
So I think that kind of covers water and wastewater systems as well. Did you have something to add on that?
Yeah, that was excellent.
Well, the only other thing that's coming up with wastewater is our new MPDES permit that we're in the process of reviewing right now. And we have to get comments back by Friday, back to the, back to the board. And that'll go into effect later this year. I don't know if it's November 1st, I believe is the date. So that's a big, it's a pretty big, a pretty big deal right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Anything happen at MCAG?
MCAG did not meet, will not meet until the end of the month.
Okay. LAFCO?
Ditto.
MTA?
They canceled their meeting in, for August.
ESMO?
Hasn't met.
EDFC?
We, we will be meeting tomorrow at the Methodist Church in Yucaya, which is proposed to be a work, let me call it.
Co-work.
A co, yeah, a co-work facility, which will include being the offices for EDFC and for West Company. And so they just had an open house a couple nights ago to encourage other startup businesses or businesses that don't necessarily want their own separate offices to, to have a co-work facility where they can share some of the, the support systems and infrastructure. And I'll find out tomorrow at our meeting how that went, if there's some live wires out there. And we'll also be discussing the direct public offering, local investing opportunities, and the meatpacking plant, and the biochar, and the wool processing facility. So there's quite a bit of economic activity being talked about in our, in our county, as well as Lake County, that is EDFC's period. So tomorrow at 2:00 at the Methodist Church.
League?
I misspoke. LAFCO did meet. We had a four-hour meeting, and we're starting on the sphere of influences. So I, I brought a couple for Adrian to look at, for, to sort of look at, to see what they're like. Yeah. And League did not meet.
Water and wastewater, I don't believe anything met there. And Reby Head has a meeting scheduled, right?
September 23rd.
It was September 22nd.
It's my anniversary.
September 22nd?
September 22nd.
Finance, not met. Any other ad hoc committees that we need to?
Caltrans ad hoc meeting is scheduled for September 1st.
Any other committee reports I'm missing?
Not exactly, but I had my first NCRA board meeting today in Nevada. And I'll be able to keep us apprised if anything comes up related to Willis.
Good. So I think, do we have any good in welfare?
Well, I'd like to just remind people that, well, one thing, Caltrans has decided, at least for now, not to use herbicides in the mitigation lands, which is, I think, good news and consistent with resolutions passed by us and the county. They stand, they, they haven't made a commitment not to ever do it, but they're just, for now. But the meeting that they were going to have tomorrow evening, I believe, is on but not being hosted by Caltrans. It will be here at City Hall, is that right?
In the community center. Community center.
At the community center. Six to eight tomorrow evening, talking, and it'll be citizens basically talking about concerns about how the mitigation is being handled, and what can we do as a community to make sure that mitigation is in fact effective and doesn't cause more damage than good, now that we have the bypass, basically, it's a done deal. So mitigation's where, where we might be able to have some influence. So that's tomorrow at 6:00.
Two things. There's a garden tour coming up on Saturday. It's going to be a walk-in garden tour around the west side. And I know North Street Collective is on there, a number of other local gardens that is going to be fun. So I welcome everyone to, to join us for that. We're meeting at Brookside School at 10:00 in the morning. Also, I had the opportunity to go to the Redwood Empire Fair, as many of us did for the dinner, but also the auction. And I accidentally bought a steer, which I'll have to tell you guys about sometime. But it's.
Accidentally?
Yeah.
You noticed?
I noticed. Yeah.
Nobody noticed. Not one of them.
You notice when you, yeah, buy a 1,300-pound, yeah. It felt like buying a car. But yet again, the prices were just out of the park. I mean, the kids really do a great job. And so despite the tears, you know, it's, it's really great to see the kids out there learning lessons about responsibility. And I know there was some college money that was made this past weekend.
So, okay, anybody else? Got it? Do we have closed session tonight, then?
I pulled A.
And, and we have nothing on B, so no.
Yay!
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. There, Mr. Stransky in a second?
Definitely.
Oh, okay. That's fine. All in favor?
Bye.